Welcome back. And now I'm here with Mark Chapdelane, our third candidate running for Precinct Two. Welcome, Mark.
Thanks. Thanks for having me.
Mark, would you like to take a moment and introduce yourself to the community and tell them why you're running?
Sure. My name's Mark Chapdelane. I'm a resident of Emerson Road in Precinct Two, and I've lived in Winthrop since 2011 with my wife Christina and our three kids. They're aged five, seven, and nine. And I'm running because I think what we do in the next four years is going to impact the lives of the people of Winthrop for the next 40 years. And I think that my experience and my background will help me make great decisions or the right decisions that can help keep moving our town forward.
Thank you, Mark. So, Mark, one of the big questions right now on the ballot is regarding the new fire station. Do you support this initiative?
I do. I do. When I first learned about it, I had a lot of questions about it, and I was frankly against it. I didn't think there was a need, and I thought the cost was just too high. I took the opportunity to tour the two fire stations, and that changed my mind significantly. In doing so, I saw how outdated and how far past their lifespan these buildings were, the way the apparatuses come in, the way the gear is stored and decontaminated, and mainly where we're asking our firefighters to live and sleep. Extremely outdated, and they're not buildings that can be restored. So as time went and I thought more about it, having seen these fire stations, the need was clear. The next question came was the cost. Why so much money? Why? How do we get to $40 million? And the reality is, is the cost to build a building like this goes up about eight to 10% every year. So had we done it 10 years ago, it would have been significantly less. This cost and the way this cost is going to be borne upon the taxpayers, it still weighs on me. It's still a problem, and I think it really does affect how people are going to be able to continue to pay one more tax, one more bill that people are going to get stuck paying. And that's something that I think we can take a lot of steps to try to defray a bit. I do think that MWRA, their contract is up in June of 2025. I think they should be our partner in this. I think if this does pass and we are faced with this debt exclusion and going to the tax rolls, when we go to negotiate with the MWRA, and their contract's simple. Their contract is eight pages in length. It says that Winthrop's going to provide fire, police, and infrastructure, and they're going to give Winthrop money as a result. Currently, the schedule, which was done 20 years ago, is about $1 million a year. With some inflation and upgrades to that contract, it's about $2 million that the town actually receives. But the reality is, is we're providing the first responders for Deer Island. And there's no reason that they can't be a cosigner on this, and there's no reason that we can't bring this to the negotiating table when we're coming to them pretty much January 1st. The final portion of the fire station is, goes to really where the location's going to be, and that's really a sticking point for a lot of people. And it was hard for me, too, because one of the things I think that makes Winthrop great is some of our old architecture. And that building is by far some of our best architecture that we have left in town. And I didn't like the idea that it could come down, but the reality is, is the offices are old, they're small. Whoever buys that building next, and it's been for sale before, they can take the building down, and they can put up what they want. It can be a new, modern building. It can have meat market space or it can't. It's up to them. And if that goes down, then the tenants of that building, they have nothing. They have whatever their leasehold interest is, and once the lease is up, it's up. So while I didn't like the fact that they were taking that building and that it was going to change that square for a different look, it's a building that is a perfect location for what we're considering putting there. It's at the top of a hill. If climate change is really the daunting issue of our day, the chances of a 100-year storm, and a 100-year storm is just the highest rainfall we can expect over the next 100 years in any given storm, if the waters do come up, and we're a town that is surrounded by water, if they do come up, that is probably the highest point that's accessible in town. And I think that's a really important factor for us to keep all of our life safety apparatuses there, a little bit on top of a hill, so that if we do need it, if we are in kind of that ground zero crisis mode, we're not digging it out of water in order to try to get at the equipment that we need for what would be really...
Yeah, and you bring up a good point, too, that, you know, that the building, if you don't do this with the fire station, somebody's going to buy that building. So those people will be out of that building, could be out of that building. So, you know, and I know from what I've heard, you guys, the town has been working on trying to make sure that these people are, you know, have a place to go to currently.
Well, my discussions with the Town Council President, Letery, have been what happens to these folks. And the reality is that every one of the tenants there will have suitable replacement at the same price they're paying now. Many times, in many instances, an upgrade over where they are now. So, you know, I know the meat market was against it at first. There were some blindsided. But over time, as this process has been explained to them, my understanding now is that they're happy about it. They're seeing that they're going to have a better lease for a longer period of time and a better location than where they are now. The office space upstairs, it's all replaceable in many respects, and one by one, these tenants are finding that there are other options out there, and the town is on the hook through the eminent domain process, is on the hook for finding a suitable replacement for all of their businesses.
Whereas a private business would not be...
Correct.
...to come in there. So let's talk a little about any experience with municipal budgets?
No, I don't. I've run a small business for the last 20 years, a lower office, so I'm very familiar with budgeting. I'm very familiar with the money in has to match money out. And I'm familiar with what we can do to find new areas of revenue. I've been involved in single-family construction over the years as part of my practice. I've recently renovated, got renovation of a house during COVID. I've recently done...
You and many people.
Yes. I did a build-out of my new office space on the Somerset Building. And so I am familiar with construction budgets and line item budgets. And I've certainly been following Winthrop's budgets over the year and the school budget and how that interplays. I'm familiar with grants and grant writing and why it's important for us to, as a town, find a way to get a good grant writer, because by and large, you know, if they cost us 50, they typically bring in tenfold, 500,000 in grants. If the grant writing department costs us 100,000, we can expect $1 million in grants. Those numbers aren't pulled out of the sky. Those are grant writer after grant writer that comes to municipalities. This is what they're able to provide us. So, you know, we're getting into the dollars and cents here of how to make this town work, and grants is going to be one way that we can do that. So although I don't have direct experience in municipal financing, I understand how finance works. I understand how dollars and cents work. And I know that if we don't have the money and we need the money, we need to find inventive ways of getting the money.
So let's talk a little about, you're in the council, you're elected to the council. How do you perceive your role related to the school district and the school budget?
I think it's an important role. One, we need to provide our school district more money. It's troubling to me, and part of the reason why I'm running is because we're in the bottom third of all school districts in the Commonwealth. And that's troubling for a lot of reasons. The biggest reason is we have great teachers. We have great buildings. They're brand, not brand new, but they're pretty new.
Pretty new.
As far as school buildings go. And we have great kids. I've coached my kids in Little League and lacrosse and soccer, and I see the parents down at the field. They're involved with the kids. I see them at pickup. I see them constantly with their kids at these different events. And I know that they're invested in their kids' futures, and they're staying on top of it. So when this school bottom-third issue came before me, I looked at, well, what is it? Is it just the formula? What are we missing? And what we're missing is a robust AP, Advanced Placement Program. We have virtually no foreign language program, other than Spanish. Where our math and our English scores, they're low for various reasons. But the biggest thing is, is we're dealing now with a situation where we're running out of space in our buildings. We're hearing things like pods might be needed. We're hearing things that class sizes could crest over 25 on average. And we need to find ways to get our school committee the money that they need so that they can pay our teachers. Our teacher's average salary is, I think, $76,000. Average for the Commonwealth is just shy of $100,000 per teacher. We're doing a great job in keeping our teachers and finding great teachers from year one to six in their careers, but we're losing them in six to 12, those very years that we really want to get these teachers in their prime teaching our kids. Many times, we're losing them to other communities that simply can pay more. So I think the first line of defense is we need to come up with more money for the school committee, first and foremost. In addition, we've got to give some direction to the school committee as much as we can. Now, the Town Council President sits on the school committee as a member. So he, in many ways, is the voice of the Town Council at these meetings. But, you know, if we want a foreign language program, for instance, or for instance, if we want a music program, bringing back the ATC Band is something I've heard four different times from completely different sections of Precinct Two, which isn't that big. But everyone wants the ATC Band program back. That's something we can, as a council, and we're giving the money and setting up the budgeting so that the school board can make determinations of where their budget is going to be, as a Town Council, we can say, hey, we want the music program to be robust again, and we want to stop building it back up. And that's one of the initiatives that, as a Town Council, we're asking you to do. Now, they may or may not do it, but if they're hearing it, we have a better chance of getting it in. And I really do think that music and the arts and sports are something that, it just makes a better overall experience for all of these kids that go through our school system.
It was my experience that got me through the school system personally. So I, you know, the arts was what made me who I am today. So thank you on that. So there's been a lot of discussion, we're sticking with schools, about the old middle school, and I can't believe I'm still talking about the old middle school, but it's still there. And what, do you have a vision for that future site?
I do. I've had a vision for a lot of years since the new school was built, and that began its eight-year odyssey of remaining empty. We, as a town, it costs us about $70,000 a year. So that's about $560,000 that we've wasted on that building just sitting idly. But it's not just the money that we've wasted. It's, there's 10 years of people's lives that they live in this community, and they didn't get any benefit from that very valuable piece of land that Dr. Ingalls gave us when they were dividing up the town 150, 200 years ago. And he donated this land to us with Ingleside Park, and the goal was for us to use it for public good, for us to enjoy it as a community. So I've always thought that the best use for that would be a world-class, first-class community center for our kids, something that we could have basketball courts, we could have a pool, we could have a gym, we could have gymnastics, we could have room for the arts, we could have virtually anything we want. It's about a two-acre site, a valuable two-acre site. And with the rink staying put, because I think it's part of the fabric of this town, we should not touch that sheet of ice. We should build around it and use that as kind of the centerpiece of what it is that we're doing. But I think we should have very close to what's being proposed now. So what's being proposed now, as I understand it, is a rec house, a rec center, that would have four basketball courts. And those four basketball courts is what's going to drive revenue for the developer. Now, in addition to these four basketball courts, there's going to be other portions of this building that would be rented out. However, it would be rented out by this developer. But the true value to this developer is holding AAU tournaments and other things that could drive a significant amount of revenue for the developer, which would allow for the town to collect some revenue there. I have a couple of concerns. First concern is access. You can build the greatest building on the planet there, and if we don't have access as a community, what do we really have? We just have a giant building sitting largely unused during the week that the town has no access to. It does us no good. The second is, this is a town that has no access to a thoroughfare. We are not on the list of places where leagues, hockey leagues, and basketball leagues necessarily want to play. That they may come in for a tournament and leave, but as far as being the regular Saturday location for a league, Winthrop doesn't make the list because we're too difficult to get to from virtually any location. We're a difficult place to get to. So I think that we need to be very concerned, and we need to be in place as to where exactly we stand if this business fails. If this developer goes belly up, God forbid, the economy changes, the projections could be wrong. Well, is this building going to be tied up in bankruptcy court for 10 years? Is this building, are we going to be, as a community, behind a $20 million mortgage that is suddenly, you know, sitting here, and we as a community who have to determine whether or not we want to pass a debt exclusion to buy this building back from the bank or from somebody else? Or are we able to negotiate that we're actually in first position, that we would have a super priority lien over this property, and any money borrowed on this property is after Winthrop? So Winthrop could be in a position where we would receive this building without any debt if the developer was to fail. Now, I'm not hoping anyone fails, but I'm concerned that if that happens, where we stand as a community. And the third part is, what it's going to comprise of. We have some great businesses in town that would fit well in this, and certainly with procurement laws, we would need to put out RFPs and take the steps that we need to make sure that the use of the building would be something that we could design as a community, to create that citizens group like we did with the high school. I think there was 19 members. Four of them were on the Town Council, and there was 15 members of the community that came in, and they weren't just members of the community handpicked. When the high school was built, the new high school was built, and I'm sure you know well, you found an architect, you found a business, a finance person, you found some sports people, you found some arts people. You did, you found all of the people that you needed so that you had a lot of the answers sitting in the room. And I think if we do that and work closely with a developer, there's no reason that we can't give the valuable space to that developer to do what they need to do with, but that we can get other 10,000 and 12,000 square foot boxes built that we could rent as a community. So whereas right now, we're expecting maybe 150,000 to 200,000 to come in from this developer in annual rent, we could actually expand that and have other businesses under the portion that's built by this developer but is owned by the town, that the town could pull other significant rental income from those other boxes or units that would be there. You know, you could pull another $200,000, $300,000 in rents if we develop this property properly.
So let's go into another area about fees and water rates, because I know that those, water rates is always a hot item, and we always know when the water rates are coming out, because you'll start to see the buzz or hear the buzz around town. And then recently, they had additional fees when it came to the trash fee. How do you feel about fees in general? And also, in regards to the water rates, what do you think, or how can you change those current rates to maybe help defray, you know, any additional increases?
So I think the average person, the average citizen, doesn't want to be nickel-and-dimed. I think the trash fee in particular, the $160, I think a lot of people feel, see it as a slap in the face. Here, we pay our taxes. We do what we do to live in the community, and we get added on another $160. Now, the average tax bill in Winthrop, I believe, is right around $6,000. So to add $160 to that doesn't seem like much. Now, it adds up to almost $1 million a year. But what we have to ask ourselves is, how much of that $1 million a year is going into the administration of this trash program? Are we losing 20% of that in having the manpower to run this program? And that's a problem. I would like to see the trash fee go away. I don't think it's something we could do to our town manager in one year's time. I think it's something we would have to ease into, maybe in year two or three, so that the town isn't faced with a $1 million shortfall. But the general aspect of fees, of user fees in the high school, I don't like. I don't like the concept that if a kid wants to go out to sport, they have to ask their father or mother for $500 so that they can go out for the team. It should just be automatic. They should be going out for the team because they want to play that sport, and the money shouldn't come into play. The kid shouldn't feel pressure because finances aren't there possibly. What was the other fee you were speaking of?
Talking about the water rates.
The water rates. So the water rates is something that is really tough, given the fact that we have Deer Island in town. Our water rates are more than double the average of other communities like us. So the troubling part of that is our water is one-third of our bill, and our sewer is two-thirds of the bill. So part of when we negotiate with MWRA in June, for June of 2025, and again, this should start in January of 2024, to give us 18 months to negotiate this, is to really have a good hard talk with them about what we're paying for sewer as a community and as a town. This is all part of the negotiation. This is all part of what our demands are or what our requests are as a community. Remember, 20 years ago, when they were originally coming up with this agreement, we still had selectmen, I think Peter Gill signed the original agreement, they were supposed to barge in and out all of the chemicals, all of the waste. I don't think there's ever been a barge that's come in or out. We use our roads. And because we're using our roads, we have to have details in place.
The barge was fought off by, I believe it was the federal government, and they got involved in that whole thing, because we were supposed to have the whole beach project through the barge as well, and that never happened. So we had to have everybody come through, because living right there on the beach, I remember that, everybody came down, so yes.
Makes sense. But I think now that we now know that there won't be a barge, I think when we come to the negotiating table, we need to think a little bit more about it and ask more that, look, we need infrastructure. We need police, fire to be taking care of an infrastructure. But we also need the general taxpayer to, and water user, to get a break here. We shouldn't be at $25 for our rate where everyone else is at 11. And the reality is, is I think we have 12 water mains that still need to be replaced. They're popping all over the place. It's not even cold yet, and we're losing them. With the work that's being done over on Riviere Street, when that water got shut off and the valve pressure went to zero, when it came back on, it spiked, it flooded our system, and we've had multiple breaks. But when we have these water main breaks, we're not replacing the full length. We're only doing a 20-foot section, and it's just a Band-Aid on it. And that's why our water rates are so high, because we have so many areas of town that have antiquated water pipes, and we need to replace many, many mains. I forget the number, but I think it's like 12 miles of something crazy of water mains for a 1.6-square-mile town. That's an awful lot of water mains under the ground. And they're expensive, and they're hard to do because it involves taking up the roads and really causing a lot of disruption when it happens. But I think there are ways to attack these water rates, and I think we do that by having a frank discussion with Deer Island, their first and foremost, who can help us deal with all of these things.
So I got a couple more questions. We've still got some good time left here. If elected, you know, you're one person out of nine, and I think that that's important. So, but you, but you have strategies, or you have initiatives that you want to get passed. What strategies do you use to try to convince your other members that this is the way to go?
So I've, I served as a chairperson of the Board of Licensing, and during COVID, when that struck, we really had a bright light shine upon us with the outdoor dining having to be opened. And what we found in that situation was we needed to do something that no one had ever done before, because no one ever lived through a pandemic. The Spanish flu folks weren't sitting on our board. And we really were in a situation where we needed to design a process for approvals of tents and how the outdoor dining was going to work, and we needed to get the people approved in enough time that they could buy what they needed to buy so that they could all open by June 5th, when the governor was going to let us reopen our doors. And in doing that, the way I was able to kind of keep the board with me was by showing up prepared, by going to every location before we had the meeting and knowing the location, having the screenshots on my Zoom screen, because we weren't meeting, we were on Zoom, and letting the members know, and not letting them know, but having the members of the board go through the process and see that they weren't just wasting their time, that after the first meeting and we got through maybe five restaurants, when I called for another meeting two days later, because we were on a very strong time crunch, there wasn't a feeling of, well, that's a waste of time tonight. Why are we going to waste more time in two days? It was an understanding the importance of it, and I think it all starts with prep. When I was on the ordinance review committee, I chaired that also this past year, and every meeting that I went to, I was fully prepared. I never would go to a meeting without knowing exactly what section we were going to discuss, reviewing it, reviewing the history of that there, and reviewing what ordinance or what portion of the charter, how it compared to other communities. For example, use variances, we're one of 12 communities with use variances. What that basically means is if you were to build a house and you had a hardship because of shape or topography or soil conditions, you could petition the Board of Zoning Board, and you could ask for a variance for front setbacks, say, that you need to put your house five feet from the lot line where 20 feet is a zoning bylaw, zoning ordinance. And with a four out of five vote, our ZBA can sign off on that, and you can build your house closer to the street. What a use variance is, however, is unique. What that says is you live here, and next door to you is a big, beautiful Victorian that they've moved out of, and the family's left, and the developer buys it. And they don't want a single family anymore. They want a six family, because six condo units have good value, and they can get their square footage way, way up. A use variance allows that same group of people to make a decision on whether or not there can be a change of use. Now, if use variances didn't exist, for example, you would go to the planning board for recommendation, and then you would go to the Town Council, a body of elected, transparent, open meeting that everyone can see every other Tuesday, and you would ask them to change the zoning of that parcel. It's a big difference. So when we were going through that process in the ordinance review committee, what I was able to do was I was able to look at, well, who else has these, what other towns? And we learned that Bridgewater was getting rid of theirs. Well, why? Why was Bridgewater singling this issue out? And by doing that, I was prepared and able to share the preparedness with other members of the board, and I think it helps move our initiatives through, and I would take that same approach to the Town Council if elected.
Great. So my last question to you is, it's kind of a little more personal for you on that. Give me three words that best describe you and why.
I would say dedicated, focused, and hardworking. I'm hardworking by necessity. I have three kids. I'm self-employed. I have no choice but to work hard. I have people relying on me, both clients and family, and as a result, hard work is something that, since I started as a busboy at age 15, I feel that I put my best effort forward every day. Dedication. I'm dedicated to this town. I love this town. I think it's a great place. I think it's a unique place. I think we have amazing beaches. We have amazing restaurant community. We have, we have a lot going for us. We also have some pretty tough neighbors. Massport, one-third of their runways are in Winthrop. A lot of those are frankly in Precinct Two. And I think it's something that we really need to have a good, hard talk with, with Massport also. Their contract also is up in June of 2025, and that will be on part of the negotiation come January 2024. So I think dedicated to the town is certainly there, and focused. I have no choice but to be focused on what I do in many times. If I'm, when I was renovating my house, I was there morning. I had an afternoon meeting with the contractors, and I was back there at night to check and see what was done, walking around with my iPhone flashlight, preparing for the next day. And, you know, when I have a task that we can focus on, for example, the old middle school project, once that foundation is in place and we're starting to discuss what the actual project will look like, I'll be focused on getting a plan of attack in place and piece by piece, taking a step and taking a, moving the ball forward every day a little bit so that we can get shovels in the ground within a two-year period.
Thank you, Mark. So we've got a couple of seconds here. We want to just tell everybody why closing out... So we've got a couple of seconds here, we want to just tell everybody why closing out.
Sure. Thank you for listening and watching. I'm very interested in serving as Precinct Two's Town Council Representative and I'm committed to this town and I, I hope I can earn your vote on November 7th.
So I want to thank you all for watching our three candidates. I want to remind everybody that Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th. Please make sure you get out and vote. Also, myself and Eric Gaynor will be doing a show on election night, starting at 7:30. We hope that you will tune in and have a good day. Thank you.